And we are now recording, so thank you everybody for attending. My name is Annie Gaines and I am from the Idaho Commission for Libraries. Here to welcome you to this session on building, creating positive factors for children during this time. We are recording this webinar so that others can view it later. And anyone who has registered for this will receive a link to the recording. And we encourage you to use the chat box. We've muted all participants, but we'd love to hear your comments and questions. And on behalf of the ICFL and the Institute of Museum and Library Services, it's my pleasure to bring you this webinar. And first, I'm going to introduce Jennifer Redford, our Youth Services Consultant.
Hello, everyone. It's nice to see many new faces and see some familiar faces today. And I wanted to thank you for taking some time out of your day to view this webinar live. This is part of a series of trauma-informed libraries webinars that we are doing. The first one we did was last week and we encouraged everyone who attended that one to watch a YouTube video on brain development to also inform their knowledge of what it means to be trauma-informed in a library. Last week's webinar is available on the ICFL website in our continuing education area. And when we send out the links from this webinar to all of you who attended today, we'll send out a link to last week's webinar as well in case any of you missed it. The reason that we are bringing this type of information to all of you is that I've been really inspired by the creative ways many of you are reaching out to members of your community in very, very difficult circumstances. And it got me to thinking that even though services may be limited, our contact with the public may be limited, we can still support the families and the children in our communities, especially those that are dealing with extremely difficult circumstances. And in order to do that, I wanted to make sure that the folks in the Idaho Library Community and beyond really have the knowledge behind, or really have the knowledge of what being trauma-informed means and how they can make an impact in their communities before they hit the ground running and think of all the creative services that I know you're going to do. So I hope as you listen to Roger talking today, you think about the ways you've been connecting with your communities virtually or maybe at food distribution sites, wherever you're connecting with your community. And how can what you are learning about today make an impact in those new channels that you're creating? So I'm going to turn it over to Roger Sherman, who is a partner of the Idaho Commission for Libraries. He works at the Idaho Children's Trust Fund and he'll tell you a little bit about his organization. But I'm really excited about the partnership that we formed with his organization because both of our groups really work to improve the lives of the families in our communities. And we have so much that we are, there's so much that we're doing that is really hitting the same families and trying to strengthen the families. So I'm really excited that we can work together and share resources and very excited to have him on today. Roger, would you like to tell us a little bit about Children's Trust Fund and then dive right in?
Of course. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Annie, for hosting this webinar. The Idaho Children's Trust Fund, and there are trust funds in pretty much, I think, all the states that I saw, there are trust funds in each of them that focus on prevention of child abuse and neglect with a particular focus around strengthening families. And so we are also the state affiliate of Prevent Child Abuse America. And you have Prevent Child Abuse America affiliates in all of your states. So what I'm talking about would at least be similar to what, you know, all of those trust funds around the country are thinking about. We have over the last few years, and I'll talk about this a little bit more going forward, but just in introduction, the idea of Hope Conquers Aces. We have been involved in work around adverse childhood experiences and the impacts of those on kids' and families' lives for several years and have more recently started to focus more on what's called HOPE, which is health outcomes from positive experiences. And I'm going to go into depth around that. Hopefully, I'll go into these learning objectives that will, hopefully, you'll understand more about how this HOPE framework is an antidote to Aces, to adverse childhood experiences. Learn what we are doing to promote that framework. Learn some about how your library can help build positive experiences for children and families. And then find out how you can join with others. I'm saying statewide, I'm going to guess that there are also comparable organizations in most of your states. And then, you know, to the extent I can answer any questions you have about resources. So we have what we call a community of practice. We have a group of about 40 trainers strategically located around the state of Idaho who are involved in an effort to make people more aware of how we can build positive experiences and the impact of adverse experiences on brain development in ongoing parenting and family life and relationships. The HOPE concept, as I said, is health outcomes from positive experiences. And Aces, and I hope you're all familiar with this, I know we talked more about those last week, adverse childhood experiences. They're key concepts in our mind to understanding what we need to do to, in our homes and communities and our, you know, in our community institutions, to create the best environments for children to thrive. And so we have this idea about HOPE conquers Aces, that we mean that when children grow up with a preponderance of positive experiences, we can reduce or eliminate adverse ones. So, and like to say, and whole generations of children's lives and families' lives will be better as a result of that work. These are just quickly some of the things that we're doing. We have some films, we have some simulation games. We have done with some of the libraries, the Brain Architecture game. That's something that came from the Harvard Center on Developing Child. It's a great way of understanding both the impacts of positive and negative experiences. We have a variety of different training programs for parents and for professionals on neglect, on child sexual abuse prevention, and generally on parenting using the basis of building strong protective factors. Just to give a quick review of, you know, of what we need to prevent. I don't know if you've seen this slide. I know it was, Taryn, my coworker, Taryn, shared this last week, but I know all of you weren't on there. But this is, this is what we call a pair of aces. Traditionally, the aces, the adverse childhood experiences are what are above the soil in this drawing in the tree, those things that are, that are kind of manifest. We see them, you know, mental illness, incarceration, homelessness. All of these things are a result, or excuse me, an outcome of adverse childhood experiences for folks. And then underneath the soil and the roots, and the roots of problems, you really have this focus around these larger societal systemic issues, poverty, discrimination, et cetera, you know, that we know operate within all of our communities at one level or another. And so these are part of what we're, you know, we think that our scope of work involves all of those. And, you know, hopefully for all of us, you know, as we think about ourselves in that continuum of community activities through our, you know, agencies that are specifically responsible for children's wellbeing. But I think the role of everybody in the community is children's wellbeing. And, you know, our work at, your work at libraries, our work at the Children's Trust Fund, certainly with the Idaho Commission and with individual libraries, it's been a tremendous partnership recognizing the ways in which you touch families' lives. And, you know, and I think the opportunity for doing really great things exists already. And you're already doing great things. And then the opportunities for doing more, you know, as we look forward, I think are even greater. Just again, a quick review of what the adverse childhood experiences. This is based on a study that was done in the late 1990s focusing on these 10, these 10 kinds of experiences that kids, kids may, may have. This is done retrospectively, so the question was asked, you know, before the age of 18, did you experience any of these? And these are the things that showed up most frequently is that either there was abuse neglect or household dysfunction. And the numbers are high and all these a lot higher than people would have expected and have had a tremendous impact on families and people's lives. Some of the things that we see in terms of the behavioral impacts of Aces, you know, more likely to consider them. So you can see that if you have, if you have four aces, which is in the gray, you're much more likely to have, to, to do some of these things. And you can see the fewer aces you have, the less likely you are to be an alcoholic, the less likely you are to smoke, less likely to use illicit drugs, and less likely to have significant absenteeism in your job. And so each of these things, which seem, you know, I think, I think until the science was done, maybe we thought, would have thought, well, this kind of, this makes sense if you've had those negative things. But the science tells us now that, you know, really, we can almost measure it. And, and as the scientists involved in this, the doctors involved in this say, you know, what's predictable, predictable is preventable. And that's a way for us to look at these things. It's not, it's just something to get stuck in, but something we can focus more clearly on when we know that, you know, the children in our lives, if we can reduce the number of adverse experiences they have, and for the adults in our lives, if we can recognize, and for the children in our lives, that we can recognize that if you've gone through some of these adverse experiences, you, you know, that the likelihood of these things are higher. And so our opportunity to change that trajectory is important. These are health, health impacts. You can just see that, again, the more likely, that the higher number of aces that you have, the more likely you are to, to experience some of these health impacts, which are huge. So maybe just take a quick look at that. But the real crux of the whole idea behind the ACE study as we look forward is not to, is not to get focused on the problem, is not to admire that problem, but to focus more on, you know, shifting the paradigm, to go away from the idea of, what's wrong with you kid who does these things? But what's happened to you? And understanding that what's happened to you affects, you know, how, what we see as behavior. So this is just another way of looking at reframing behavior. You can look at, you can see this as, you know, this, this is probably what's presented. The idea, is it this, you know, is it anger management? Is it anger, anger, is it willful, naughty, and controllable? Or are they pushing your buttons? Are they being manipulative? You know, do they seem to be seeking negative consequences? Or is it actually, you know, this, right? That they're scared, they're in a fight-flight-freeze mode. And those of you who did participate, or probably many of you understand that whole concept of how brain development and how stress operates, that, you know, people who have experienced a tremendous amount of adverse experience will be in this situation, maybe in perpetual fight, fight or freeze, will do things that you don't necessarily like to seek, you know, seek to actually adapt to and deal with problems. I mean, it's, it's not unreasonable for people to seek bad, to do some things that, you know, really may be the only way they know how to get their needs met. But again, this core, this core piece and our core belief on this is that aces are not destiny, that they are only, they help us to understand what people have experienced, but they don't tell us how you're going to end up. And that's what's crucial in terms of understanding when you, when you experience kids in the library, you experience kids in your community who are, you know, who are quote unquote, misbehaving in certain ways, you can recognize that in fact, likely it is that certain things have occurred in their life that have led them that way. How do we help reshape that so that that's not the end outcome? So this is what the science is starting to tell us. And hopefully this chart makes sense to you. The, you can see on the left axis, you have depression and poor mental health. This is the work of a consortium of people led by a pediatrician named Bob Segge, who's at Tufts Hospital in New York City. This was from JAMA Pediatrics last year. There, there are several other of these people who work in the arena of social, social, emotional work, who do work around, around community norms and a whole bunch of different arenas. So it's a really diverse research group. But you can see how these are PCEs, are, stand for Positive Childhood Experiences. And you can see with these that those people who've had, these are all people with higher ACE scores, but then they have, they have a higher level, as they have a higher level of positive childhood experiences, that level goes down. So that, so that the impact of positive experiences changes the likelihood that that person who has four or more aces, or two or three aces, will have actually depression or poor mental health. I hope that makes sense. If it doesn't, you know, write something in the chat and ask me a question. Now remember the other tree we looked at, that in, in that, in that one, what we saw were the negative impacts. We saw how systemic problems and then the adverse childhood experiences develop. The hope is that in developing a more, that as we think about how we build positive experiences and change the trajectory, that this is what we start to see, right? Steady employment, fewer children in foster care, fewer justice-involved youth. And, and this is where it's so crucial that we connect our systems and supports. There's a lot of work going on throughout the country, really, on trying to link up child welfare systems, the prevention services, community institutions, and courts, so that you start to align those services and programs so that eventually you get to a point where what you're focusing on is not, you know, just trying to fix a negative problem, but trying to build systems that, that really support kids and, and parenting and adults and communities to support kids. And so this is the broader, this, this tree is obviously our, our goal tree. This is where we'd like to end up. But I think, you know, as you think about yourself as a library, or whatever other, you know, institution you're involved in, that, you know, lots of people are doing lots of things, but they're not necessarily connected to each other in any way that, that really achieves the goals we want. And so our effort, our work is really to figure out how, you know, you find both usual and unusual partners to connect with so that we create what's been described as a 21st century child wellbeing system, rather than thinking about our systems as being a child welfare system that is only focused on, or that is primarily, ends up primarily being focused on removal and foster care and doesn't focus enough on, you know, what we can do early so that we change the trajectory for kids and families. So then we kind of come to this question about brain development. This is that, you know, is the brain, you know, can, can we change things? And Dr. Shonkauf was with the Harvard Center on the Developing Child, says this, you know, you can read it, but the highlighted part, you can develop resilience later and you can, you can get better and things can get better. So we know that, you know, there, you're not in a fixed place. You can change. And this is, this is their, you can see that, you know, at the ages of, you know, the early ages of, you know, birth to, to 10 or so, it's, it seems like it gets, it's much easier for the, for the brain to change, for you to build resilience for, and then over time, the effort to do so gets, gets greater. So that while change is certainly possible throughout our lives, you know, our brains are not stuck in place like we used to believe, but our brains continue to change and grow. And so resilience and the circuits that give us the capacity to, you know, to, to, to become self-actualized, let's say, or to at least, you know, increase our resiliency to dealing with adverse experiences. Can change throughout our lives, but it certainly is easier. And why it's so critical that we focus a lot on younger ages so that when, so that, so that as kids develop, they become the kind of adults that, you know, operate in, you know, some successful way, I hate to define that, but, you know, in some successful way. So now we come to HOPE, again, health outcomes from positive experiences. This idea, so there's two words, HOPE, health outcomes from positive experiences, and PCEs, which are Positive Childhood Experiences, that are basically part of the same conversation. And, you know, and this is, this is sort of our mantra, right? Is that HOPE conquers Aces when protective factors outweigh adverse experiences. So you saw that in that chart, you know, where the, the more positive experiences that people had in their lives, the less likely the Aces had the impact that they could have. These just quick are kind of some source material for where this, where the, where the researchers developed their, you know, this concept of Positive Childhood Experiences. And now what I'm going to go into is what, what are considered the four pillars of, the four pillars of the HOPE framework. And so the first one is being in nurturing, supportive relationships. And I guess this is a place where I might want to open up the lines, Annie, if we could, and if people have comments on this. Would you consider your library, well, I guess two questions. One is, when you, do some of the kids in your library, do you find, are they coming from nurturing and supportive families? Are they coming, is that, is that what their household is like? And to the extent, maybe that's not true, or are, are you, what, what are you doing to help provide that nurturing and supportive environment for, you know, for those kids to develop those kinds of relationships? And you can put something in the chat and Jennifer will read it to me or, you know, if you want to open it up and say something, I'd love to hear your thoughts on this.
And so we have someone say, it's about half and half.
It's about half and half, the kids who come in, who, who are coming out of nurturing and supportive families and relationships.
We have someone say, it's a mix of children from nurturing homes and others are struggling with stability.
So what do you think that you as libraries are doing or can do to help support that kind of nurturing and supportive relationships within the context of the library? What we know is that, is that kids, the most important thing in kids' development is having supportive relationships. And so when those supportive relationships don't exist at home, somebody needs to fill those. Are there ways in which you feel like you can do that or are doing that?
We have a couple of other comments. Children who are alone need the most support. And then someone else says, I see kids from two different homes, primarily either super supportive, often well-educated, or absent parents, either physically or just parents who are ignoring the kids. Another comment, many times at the library, the time is very limited.
Right. Okay, well, something to think about, I mean, you know, so, so the reason for thinking about these four pillars, as you'll see, are kind of to think about, okay, what are some things that we can do to help develop those things in whatever context we have? The second, wait a sec.
Let's just, there's a couple more comments here.
Okay.
Sometimes programs help kids who need social support, but often the socialization opportunities don't benefit the kids as they're not able to interact with others. Someone else says, we get a lot of kids after school. Our staff tries to engage the kids in conversation and programs. We really get to know them on a personal level. And we support by having programs for children and one-on-one support, talking with kids, finding out their names and making them feel welcome.
Super important. Yeah, and I see the last one is, even if it's a short time, we provide a safe and consistent environment. Okay, cool. So this is the, the second pillar of HOPE is this whole idea of living, developing, playing and learning in safe, stable, protective, and equitable environments. And the idea behind this, I mean, we've sort of played around with this idea of, you know, what, maybe these people do have an answer to that, so I'll just throw it out there. You know, what do you think the difference is between safe and protective? This was a good additional comment from Joy Breedwell. It says, my library's on a reservation. We have children that come from a variety of different families, single parents, grandparents, are raised by grandparents. We're at our library, have community events every month, summer reading programs, just to let them hang out in the library. Safe is protective, but overprotective isn't necessarily safe. Needs to be a healthy level of protection. Yeah, safe seems like a passive quality, but protective can have something more active. I think that's kind of what we're thinking about, you know, and maybe there is, and there's this little difference, safe is something felt, protective is the act. Tricky question, okay. Safety means everything's okay now, protective means we're in the lookout for safety concerns, right? Safe. So to what extent do you feel like you can create this kind of environment? And somebody said earlier that they were creating a consistent, consistent and generally safe environment for kids. You know, some people worry about the safety of libraries just because, you know, you're not really set up to watch kids necessarily. What about this idea of equitable? How do you ensure that, you know, that this is equal access for everybody? Equal opportunity for everybody, or equitable opportunity?
Go ahead, B. Hamilton, I've unmuted you.
She looks like she's still muted.
Okay.
She needs to unmute herself. Somebody says, proactively offering connections to more concrete social supports to underprivileged. B. Hamilton said her phone disconnected. No, no, Jennifer, maybe you can read this, I'm sorry.
Sure, yep. So we strive to get as many people to participate in programs and get library cards for access to resources. Free programming, welcoming all families and children with different learning needs and abilities. Sensory friendly. And I think access to a caring library staff person has the potential to be equitable. It works to the extent that we can treat kids in positive ways, even if they are super annoying. When we have after-school programs, When we have after-school programs, we have participants separated from the general public, while, while they are centrally located, from the general public flow, while they are centrally located.
Well, I mean, and, and I'm asking this partially because I think that, you know, within every context, you all know really what you can do to create these environments. And just knowing that these are the things that are most important to, you know, to support families and building positive experiences, then you can intentionally work to do some of these kinds of things that ensure that you have a safe, stable, protective and equitable environment for kids to grow and learn and develop. And, you know, everybody doesn't have the opportunity to spend the kind of time that is, is necessary maybe to do all this, but there's also, but, you know, those who do do that and then each, you know, again, you're not on, you're not in this alone. We're part of a, you know, broader net of people trying to make sure that all kids are able to thrive. So this third pillar is this idea of having opportunities for constructive social engagement and to develop a sense of connectedness. And as they go deeper into this conversation, what they're, what they're saying is we need to develop a culture that supports social engagement and, you know, creates the opportunities for connection. To what extent do you think, again, does, does your library have, how would you describe the culture of your library? Anybody have any thoughts about that? And if it, and if it provides an opportunity for constructive social engagement and connectedness?
And Pat says that they have a welcoming culture.
How do you create a welcoming culture? That's an interesting question.
And Denise says, I foster social connection in my elementary librarian with focus on maker spaces. And another attendee says, we're often compared to a community center as well as a library. And Pat creates a welcoming culture by interacting with everyone and knowing many people by name. Becky says she has opening staff who genuinely care. Brett says completely naturally, we just know the kids personally. If they are regulars due to inconsistent home or after-school care, we greet them, know their names, keep up with what's happening at school and in other aspects of their lives. And Barbara says, try to have programming that is based on the interests of the patrons. Oh, and Fiona says, I see some great parent-to-parent support when they visit the library with their kids. Runa says, seeing mistakes as opportunities for learning rather than something that's seen as bad. And another attendee, programs that engage all groups and give space and time to storytime moms to, for social time afterward. And we try to meet the teens where they are. Have a coloring table, teen leadership corps.
Great stuff. I mean, yeah, so, so, you know, obviously, a lot of you know how to do this. And again, part of what I'm just trying to, what I'm trying to share in this is that, you know, that now there's sort of science behind these things, which you might think of as natural, but, you know, the more we recognize what are the most critical things for kids to grow and thrive, then we can do them intentionally. And we can think about them more clearly about how you create those kinds of welcoming environments where all kids feel like they can, you know, they have the opportunity to, to become connected, both with the library and maybe the librarians, but also then with maybe other, other kids and, you know, who, who also go there. And then this last pillar is a focus on learning social and emotional competency. And, you know, as kids, we know that kids learn a lot of their social and emotional competency through play, through, you know, through, through having interaction, through, you know, things that are often not always physical, because it depends on the kid, but that you learn your social emotional competencies a lot through, through different kinds of engagements that are, you know, often, you know, more fun and play than they are academic in there. And I think, right now, I think with the pandemic and so many people at home, you know, this is kind of complicating, you know, kids' lives by, you know, not having as many opportunities, especially if you're a very social kid and want to interact with other people. And I think for some people, and probably for some kids too, it's great. For some people, you know, it's a much more difficult kind of a thing. So what do you think you can do or do do to promote social emotional competency, you know, within the context of your library work?
And when a kid is neglected and comes to the library, it's obvious, we help where we can. Some of the parents are struggling or studying and bringing their child to the library and then neglect them, even very young kids. We try to engage them with maker spaces, crafts, et cetera. And storytimes with emotion themes, storytimes with intentional social emotional learning themes. We help co-sponsor a parenting class that included a meal and childcare. And I'm looking to establish a periodic online meeting for mindful practices for teens. And when it's not pandemic, we have lots of toys and games out for them to use and try, and try doing with other kids. Magnetic tiles are great for sharing. And we have a sensory storytime as well as regular storytimes. We use social emotional learning books and activities in storytimes and programs, parent-child workshops with a child development specialist. We offer kindergarten readiness class that addresses the practical and social aspects of school. And parents attend. And Joy says, right now, we are staying connected to the community by creating arts and crafts kits in place of events to, to open to the public. We hand out the kits and ask the families when they pick them up, how they are doing. And Karen says, I just started a virtual parenting book discussion group to support parents through unprecedented times at home with kids. And we also partner with daycares and special needs school programs for pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. And we have a couple of parenting kits available for circulation. These are all really great ideas, everyone.
They really are a lot of great ideas. And hopefully, we won't be in the pandemic forever. I'm, I'm going to hope so, that we will have at least some, you know, I, I do think some things are going to change, but as people talk about, and we like, I like to talk a lot about is the idea of, you know, when we reach the other side of this, can we, can we hope for a better normal? And I think, you know, it's interesting. I think that some of these technological opportunities have opened themselves up, you know, where, you know, again, we, we, you know, just in this, you know, this might have been a closed thing, if, if I were doing a presentation to, you know, an Idaho library group, you know, whereas, you know, now we can talk about this, you know, for the whole country. And the ideas you share, you know, are ideas coming from all over the country and, and they can be used, you know, wherever you are. And I think that's a, you know, that, that may be a, may be a benefit that we did not necessarily, you know, we've had this technology, but I think our willingness to use it and so on is probably changing at this point. So this is kind of giving you a little, little snapshot of, this just looks at those people who it identifies as having poor or fair health. You can see in this how those people who feel like their family stood by them, who felt supported by friends, who had a sense of belonging at high school, who enjoyed community traditions, though in those situations, people felt, or people did not have, you know, did not identify as having poor or fair health, if they had those positive experiences. And it is, it is much more, you know, likely that, you know, given all those things, that they will do and feel and be better, you know, as a result of having those things. We say family and family's important, but I think also, you know, the support of other, supportive of, of other caring adults is also crucial. Why would you think, I found this kind of interesting, why, why would you think that a sense of belonging at high school would show up as such a significant indicator? Yeah, high school is rough. I mean, we talk a lot about this with, with, with teachers, because I think it's such an important place for us to, you know, be thinking about how you create an environment where kids who maybe don't, aren't the, go to the football game, go to the prom, hang out at the, you know, whatever the right thing is, but, you know, those other kids, how, you know, who are a whole lot of the other kids, you know, who don't necessarily like the traditions or the, you know, the community traditions or the, or what makes you popular in high school, you know, how do we create an environment that accepts all of those kids? Lot of, lot, lot of answers. Jennifer, you're on.
Right. High school is when you're really figuring out who you are, if you don't belong, and that really impacts who you think you are. It's when teens have higher sensitivity to acceptance. It's a major growing point in life for a lot of people. It's when teens are becoming adults. So testing ground for real life, kids are building their own independent lives. It's an important part of brain development that is the high school years. It's a point in which there's strong individuation from parents. And so the peer group takes precedent.
I don't know if you're hearing what I'm hearing, but there's some kind of a, a car parade with music blasting and balloons and stuff. And I was like, oh, the party I was not invited to.
I hope you don't feel left out.
I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
We also.
Nice peer group here.
We also have Sheri, who's asked to be unmuted. And Sheri, I think if you unmute yourself. No, is that not working? Technology problems. I'm sorry, Sheri. If you could type your question in the chat, that would be great. And Fiona says, those who feel belittled or rejected in high school are at a really critical moment to make bad and impactful choices. Having a peer group helps with resiliency. Sounds like many of you might work with teenagers or maybe have teenagers in your homes.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so I think we recognize that it's a really critical time of life and a critical time of change. And of course, that's where it becomes so important, you know, the work that you can do to support kids and teens in, in the community programming. And I know somebody said that they don't have good luck with people coming to those programs and, you know, kids coming to the programs. And I guess that's kind of maybe suggests we got to figure out, you know, what it is that attracts kids and, you know, what we can do that makes the, you know, the library doesn't have to be the center of everything, but, you know, to the extent that that's important to some people and to many people, then, you know, what can we do that helps to bring in teens? Seems like a lot of you have ideas about that. So we, you know, so these are just a quick little, you know, you know, ask, these are some things to be the change, right, to carry on the conversation about some of these things. You know, it, it, and, and people have mentioned this earlier, that, you know, they had opportunities to talk with kids about these different things, you know, how do you feel connected? How can we create opportunities? You know, do they feel like they belong? And if they don't, you know, what are some of the things we can do, you know, help let the youth advise and, you know, and to shape some of the programming? And, you know, be someone to talk with about difficult feelings if you have that opportunity, because, you know, of course, these kids are going through it. I have twins who are 16 and boy, they go through some stuff. You know, look at some of those things, like, to what extent are we safe and stable, protective, equitable? You know, look at some of these things on how to create those social engagements, creating the role modeling, you know, offering professional development for you guys. Hopefully, this is a helpful one. And to, you know, to share results with each other, which, you know, I went, went just watching this chat box and just seeing all the kinds of ideas and so on. I just feel like you all are just such an amazing wealth of information for each other. So I hope you are able to use that after my hour of time is over. I know someone mentioned that they had not known about how prevalent adverse childhood experiences were. And they really are very, very prevalent, much more than, you know, I think was anticipated. And the more, the more that those, that the ACE survey is done in different venues, the more they find that it doesn't really, you know, doesn't, it, it, it doesn't matter where you come from, you know, they're, they're all over the place. There are certain things that are, you know, make people more vulnerable, but it's not, but it, but it is everywhere. These are some of the things that the Center for Disease Control has talked about. They sort of run the gamut from parenting programs, you know, up through changes in public policy, like family-friendly work policies, particular things like paid parental leave, you know, other kinds of more friendly leave policies that allow for families to, you know, spend time with their children, which of course, right now, very interesting, you know, I think we may learn something from this pandemic about the relationship of kids and families and all of those things that maybe that, you know, haven't been the way that people have lived their lives. And it's been a mixed bag, of course, you know, we have seen spikes, particularly intimate partner violence. We don't know a ton about what's going on, actually, unfortunately, about child abuse in most places. But we know that some of these kinds of things, both public policy-wise and at a family level are crucial. I'm just going to say, use this, this was the Idaho Resilience Project is a project that was put together to engage with people across anybody who's concerned about these issues to be involved with, learning about ACES, learning about what they can do to make a difference and to mitigate and to prevent. The Idaho Resilience Project, there's, is here. If you haven't run across the site called ACE Connection, I would encourage you to do so, because that will give you a state-by-state breakdown of what's going on in your state in terms of statewide coalitional efforts to bring together people around these issues and to try to, again, align what we can do so that we have more impact. These are some specific things you can do. This one is directly from Jennifer Redford, which I, Jennifer did a beautiful, several pieces focused around what we call protective factors. And this is the one that she did around social emotional competence of children, but there were some great things. This is about, and people mentioned this earlier, about reading stories that have certain kinds of themes, this to help, this particular one focusing around social emotional competence. So this is one specific thing that you can do in a library setting. She even gives a list of books. Hopefully, she'll send this out with the, well, you'll get this slide and maybe she'll send out her other ones as well. I think you should, Jennifer. and maybe she'll send out her other ones as well. I think you should, Jennifer.
Just a second, Roger. We have someone else who's asking to talk, so I'm moving. Yep, try it one more time.
All right.
So Kate, if you can unmute yourself. No, we're just not having good luck with this today. I'm so sorry, Kate. If you could type your comment into the chat, that would be great.
She says, my mistake. So anyway, that, that certainly suits for super sensitive mouse. That's probably a book on this list. I meant, super sensitive mouse. Okay, Jennifer put her, the storytime plans, and I think there's a beautiful way for, you know, you to do this. And you can share this with parents as well, you know, who could do it, be doing this at home, too. These are some things, you know, there are, there's, you know, I guess I see this more in schools, but I think that, you know, I'm sure that some of you have done this in libraries, but, you know, and, you know, maybe you, but to have wellness rooms. And I've just picked up this idea that there are people doing virtual wellness rooms in these trauma-informed schools where they're, you know, basically make available a variety of different videos, webcams, you know, live webcams. There's one in the jungle, one in the ocean, one in the, you know, all these different places that, you know, helps to, help to calm kids and to give them some space, some sensitivity spaces to, you know, to deal with their, with their emotions. And, you know, you get a little place like this, you know, it looks kind of, kind of cool and easy for, you know, maybe to help, you know, calm things down if a child gets, you know, is feeling, you know, hyper and, you know, or, or is emotionally dysregulated at that, at that point. So can you create new spaces? Can you create new wellness areas like that? Probably some of you are familiar with this idea of family place libraries. We, we've kind of toyed with this idea of libraries as family resource centers. You know, that might mean a variety of different things, you know, from fo bore, you know, doing all kinds of, you know, activities that are, that are both geared towards parents and kids, which you already do, but maybe in a more systematic kind of way. And these family place libraries are one idea of how those kinds of things could be organized. But then I really wanted to, you know, leave with the idea of resources, that it isn't, it isn't all up to you, right? You can find resources. These are a couple of, you know, these are Idaho-specific. I'm sure that every state has a little something like this, but, um, let's see if I can. So this is, this is a site called Live Better Idaho. And they've broken it down so you can look at these different areas and what services might be available. And, and this is really, I think, for somebody who's, who can, who can surf the web and to look at resources, but it's really a nicely put together site. I'm sure that other states have similar or even better than this. But I think this is a really nice site for helping people to figure out this one over here that's looking at Medicaid and healthcare services. But, you know, there's areas in food and nutrition, veterans, et cetera. And so that, you know, maybe if you identify some of those in your setting, you know, this is the place that people can look. Our Idaho 211 care line is a place you can call just by dialing 211 and then it has access to resources. This is a site that was created by, by a group that we work with in North Idaho that looks at the, looks at the five protective factors, which I really didn't go into, but parental resilience, parental knowledge, social connections, support, basic needs, child social emotional competence. And then it divides up the services based on those, those protective factors, so that if you want to, you know, find out about what services exist in North Idaho, this is what it is. And then, you know, what are some of the services that are available that help to build resiliency? And I think this is a really super site. I'm not sure what exists in other states that look like this, but, you know, I really like the way in which, you know, we think about, we want to build each of those protective factors. How do we do that? And I think that is the, so that, so that's, we're about, we've just got a couple of minutes, but if people have any questions or thoughts about this, we, you have any questions for me or, or any thoughts that they want to share? Please do so in the chat or, well, do so in the chat. It sounds like we're not really able to open people's mics up.
And Roger, this is Jennifer again. And I would maybe reissue the challenge from the beginning of this webinar, that as you're finding creative ways to reach out to people in your community and support them through social media, virtual storytimes, food site pickups, kits that you're handing out, maybe think of what you heard today and how you could add one thing in that would help strengthen families, whether it's using that virtual social media channel to do a quick 15-minute parenting tip with a partner from your community, or hand out information about brain development and proper behavior, different stages, if you're handing out kits to families at food distribution sites. So there's a lot of restrictions on many of you right now because of the pandemic and various stay-at-home orders. But I feel like it's also an opportunity to get really creative and figure out ways that you can support families in a, a time of need for them.
I just.
Oh, go ahead, Roger.
I just put in a chat about, there's some really great materials. There's a daily calendar that Darkness to Light, which is an organization primarily worked on child sexual abuse, put out to help, you know, more or less a strengthening family's calendar without, yeah, that you can, you can use to, you know, kind of think about some ideas. They look like there was a chat above that, our ACEs.
Oh, I would like to see a public campaign geared toward educating the general public on the concept of ACEs. It's become very prominent in education and social work arenas, but if people knew about ACEs, they could potentially understand where they are. When a person becomes aware, they can move forward. And I, I agree. And hey, the library is a great platform for. So maybe ACEs for the, you know, ACEs for parents, ACEs for families, ACEs for caregivers.
I know last year at our, at our early years conference, there was a conversation, there were a lot of librarians there, and it did seem like librarians had not been caught up on this as much. Now, I know you've been doing a lot of work over the last year, so now everybody knows. But, you know, I think that it's an intentional thing. And I know that at first, you know, it's like, they felt like they didn't know anything about it. So I agree totally. So, so, yeah, I mean, hopefully, this is kind of whet your appetite really for thinking about both ACEs, which I think are important for us to understand, but I think we should move as quickly as we can to recognizing that our real work is around mitigating the impacts of ACEs, focusing on those positive experiences, helping to build protective factors, helping to build children and family resiliency, providing the knowledge that, you know, that libraries are well-positioned to do and maybe to focus some of the activity around things like parenting programs and others and using your spaces in those ways. I mean, you have such an incredible resource and those resources are everywhere, everywhere, everywhere. You know, I know Jennifer and her colleagues have shared with us, you know, sort of some of the, you know, just looking at some of the, just really getting a sense of that libraries really are everywhere, that we have 44 counties and, I don't know, 160 libraries or some, something like that. You know, they're just everywhere, small towns, large cities, you know, the whole, to the extent we have large cities. You know, in every, in every location. And, you know, that is a real opportunity. The Centers for Disease Control has great posters. At the Centers for Disease Control, you can print out a variety of different things. They have really super resources there.
All right. Well, thank you for your questions, everybody. We are at 2:01 and I'd like to respect everybody's time. If you're like me, you may have other Zoom meetings that you've got to go to. I wanted all of you to know.
Might be true.
Annie's going to send you all a link to today's webinar that will also come with a survey. And, you know, we're able to provide access to these webinars through our funding from the Institute for Museum Services and Library Sciences. And part of the deal is if we get money, we have to get a lot of, a lot of feedback in the forms of specific survey questions. So if you could fill out that survey for us, it'd be very helpful for us when we're filling out our reports on how we spent the IMLS money. And, and there will be links in that email that Annie sent to you to everything that we talked about today. And if there's something in there that we missed or that you need from us, feel free to email me or Annie. Our emails will be in that other email that you're getting. And that's very meta about email, but that's where we're at today. Okay, thank you. One thing especially to Roger, you've been a great partner to our organization and I look forward to working more with you. I think, I feel like our work will be not done anytime soon.